Is that better?
No.
Oh. Oh, the light's on now. Okay. We got it. All right. We'll have a motion to excuse Councilmember Deaton for a family illness. Do I hear a motion in a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Second.
Motion to...
Motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor for to excuse Councilmember Deaton. Okay. Four to nothing. Four to zero. Okay. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law.
Mayor.
Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents that you may have, please pass to the city clerk and she will distribute them.
Mayor, can we just note that this is a special meeting, this six o'clock?
I did, didn't I?
This public comment would be only for the item on the agenda, not items off the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that then. Are there any oral communications on this part of the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll go right into the study session. Review of capital improvement projects prioritization, including the storm drain projects. And city manager, can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. In lieu of the time tonight to make sure we have enough time to cover, hopefully staff's presentation and have time for council questions as well and comments, I'm going to, without further delay, turn it over to our new Director of Public Works, city engineer Steve Mider. Want to welcome him as well. This is his first council meeting tonight, so Steve.
Thank you, Jill. Call the mayor, members of the council. I'd like to go ahead and go into our overview of our presentation tonight. The city of... My first set of slides, I'm going to go through the definitions of storm drain system in overview of storm drain system. And then I'm going to have Dave Spitz, our associate engineer, go through... I'm going to have our Dave Spitzer, our associate engineer, go through the actual system overview in terms of the actual master plan findings and recommendations and the project results completed to date. And then we'll have our finance director at the last of the slides. Project financing options. Vicky Beasley will be giving that part of the presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and go with the first set of slides. Let's start out with the definition. And the important definition is, so what is a master plan of drainage? If you've heard that statement, we'll be talking on that report tonight. A guide for establishing logical, cost-effective funding levels for future drainage improvements to protect public safety and property. We have a master plan of drainage that was originally offered back in 1999 and updated in 2008. And that, we'll be going through the details of this report tonight. So I wanted to kind of start out with just a kind of an overview of home drainage elements. So we have the hydrology and hydraulic analysis, the master plan of drainage, that's an important tool. And what that does establishes boundaries for water sheds and amounts of water runoff that can be anticipated using a given flood protection criteria. And that's where we start and we establish the flows. And then we use the criteria, the criteria that we use is based on Orange County flood control, which is criteria that must be factored in. And then from there, we have the other, the element stormwater runoff conveyance, those are the pipes, open channels, the way to actually convey the stormwater runoff to the pump stations, street gutters. And I think the streets are important because streets are a component of the storm drain system and gutters. And box, pipes and box culvers, we'll be talking about those tonight. Of course, catch basins and drains, those are extremely important elements. That is the device to get the water off the street, the pipes. Of course, stormwater pump stations are not always required in some cities, low level cities such as beat cities or in Orange County. We have to get the water out of the watershed into the receiving body, which happens to be the San Gabriel River.
That's how you might...
Oh, okay.
Much better.
Okay. So, the stormwater pump stations, we have two pump stations here. And of course, pump stations are a critical component in that we have a system that's relatively flat and we have to move the water or convey the water out of the watershed into the receiving body. So that's why our system, we have pump stations and we are going to be analyzing them. So this is the type of improvements we'll be talking about tonight, pump station improvements, stormwater pipelines, open channels, capacity improvements and catch basins. Those are the elements I just described. Again, it's all tied back to the conveyance of stormwater out of the watershed and based on criteria. So this define, you've seen this term a lot. What is a hundred-year flood? Flood that has 1% chance happening independently each year. So what's that mean? You're given 100 cards numbered consecutively, 1 through 100, with card one representing a 100-year flood. Each year, you pick a random number one of the cards from a full deck. And that's a 1% chance of getting that card. So that's the criteria that is standard and you hear that a lot. And we are essentially using that criteria and... Okay. Flood protection goals. Major goal, keep water at least one foot below finished floor elevation for a 100-year flood. And other goals, arterial highways, 10-year flood, keep one lane of traffic open. Local streets, 10-year flood, maintain water below curb. And again, I was just mentioning, streets are a critical element of the conveyance system. And that's why the streets were actually designed to do that. The key point is to design catch basins to remove water off the streets at calculated points. And we will be looking at that through the analysis. So here's a graphic to kind of show how the streets play into this. Arterial highway, you can see, and it says 10-year flood level, 25-year sump conditions. We do have some conditions in the city. And that means a kind of a low point, almost like a bowl. And at the 10-year level, it's designed, or it should be designed, to go right at top of curb. So at the 25-year sump level, it will flood the street. And arterial, it will flood the street and it will actually lose two lanes. And local streets are designed to be top of curb. And considered a design condition is the lane is not clear. So that is a local street criteria. That's out of the Orange County Flood Control Manual. And that's how our water master plan is, our drainage master plan is designed with that criteria. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and give the presentation over to David Spitz and he will go through the maps and the projects.
Thank you, Director Mider. What I'd like to start at this point is kind of going through some history and the Seal Beach's infrastructure as it relates to storm drains. And I apologize for some who've been here for the last couple of council meetings. I'm going to say some redundant things, but I just want to go through the whole system just to let everybody know what's in the city currently. So this is from our master plan. It's an entire map of the city of Seal Beach. It's in a large scale right here, so it's tough to see the individual storm drains and catch basins, but you get to see a lot of the federal channels. For instance, there's one that cuts across Leisure World. There's a county flood control basin and pump station right about there, the purple triangle. These are a lot of the systems that are owned and operated by either a federal agency or a county agency and not necessarily the city. Looking at some of the local areas, this is our Old Town and Hill. And this will show, your different colors reflect your different watershed. So basically, if it rains in a certain color, it'll all drain to a certain point, generally the same area. For the east side of Old Town, the hill, it generally, most of it drains to the county pump station. For the west side, a lot of it drains to West End Pump Station, some drains right to the San Gabriel River, and other locations might drain straight to the beach and then the ocean. Here is College Park East, again, showing some of the drainage tributary areas in different color. In College Park East, a small part of the neighborhood drains straight to the Bolsa Chica Channel off here to the east, and the majority drains to catch basins and underground pipes which bring it to the golf course and then eventually down this federal flood control channel and out to the San Gabriel River. And this shows College Park West, similar. They have a couple of catch basins here in the southern part of the neighborhood which drain to a channel and then to the San Gabriel River. Now, in the last 10 years or so, one of the things I wanted to bring about as this presentation is gearing towards budget concepts and cost-related concepts, I just wanted to bring about since this master plan was developed back in '08 and actually going even a little further back to times after the 2004-2005 Ad Hoc Committee on Drainage, the city has put together a lot of storm drain projects. And I basically have them all listed here. This is just the last 10 years' worth. And as you can see, the grand total in the bottom is a little over $10 million the city spent in the last 10 years on storm drain projects. And some of them are very familiar, whether it be off Candleberry or Electric Avenue or in Bridgeport areas. And I put a couple of maps up just to give a good idea of where some of these projects were. In College Park East, we have some projects right there off Candleberry and Ironwood to Lamson. And then the property purchase for future storm drain piping to the golf course up here off Ironwood. If we show Old Town in the hill, we have on the east side, a couple of projects. One of the big ones was the Electric Avenue Storm Drain Project. And we've done some projects on both Navy and city storm drain systems along Seal Beach Boulevard, which is one of the outlet areas to the Anaheim Bay to get the water off our city streets and into the ocean. And then on the west side of Old Town and the hill, we have some projects that were done up by West End Pump Station, including back in 2007 when they rebuilt the pump station. This was the Bridgeport Storm Drain Pipes that I believe were just completed about three years, two, three years ago. And this one represents some piping that was done off Corsair, I believe about 10 years ago. Now, that's kind of the history. That's what the city has for infrastructure. As we've mentioned many times, it's lacking for the city's needs. For storm drain design systems, you typically try and design for 25-year storm events. And we don't necessarily have the protection we need everywhere, whether it's just from aging infrastructure or just, in essence, needing more than we have. And these next couple of maps are also from a master plan of drainage. And I've shown them in past meetings, but they go into all the, basically all the necessary projects to bring the city up to full storm drain protection capacity for 25-year storm event. And how the master plan identifies them is through priorities. And you'll hear the word priority a couple of times, but under the master plan of drainage, when we say priority, we just meant which projects you should do first, which ones you should do second, and which ones you should do afterwards. So if you had to order them from project 1 to 100, you'd do the higher priority first and so on and so forth. The higher priority according to the master plan are in red. Whoops. In red. Like a couple up here by Marina Drive, Electric Avenue, more Electric Avenue, more Marina. When they're in purple on this map, they're the medium priority and green are the lower priority. Basically, they're kind of like, you do, you build the downstream structures first and then you work your way upstream. And that's, in essence, how these are laid out. They would be the downstream, bigger structures first and then moving upstream to the smaller and then eventually to the furthest upstream, which would be the smallest pipes. Similar map showing College Park East. Again, you have your higher priority, which would be at the exit points of the neighborhood. Medium priority would be leading to those projects. And then the lower priority would be in the highest elevation areas of the neighborhood. And here is College Park West, again, showing future storm drain project needs for the Now, in our 2008 master plan of drainage, we identify all these projects that are in need and we place cost, basically a budget number that if we were to construct the project, this is roughly what it would cost to do. And if you total them all up, all high, medium and low, and you total up the different neighborhoods where these projects would be located, you can see the grand total, and again, this is $2,008, $85 million. That's the grand total of all the city's needs for storm drain projects back in 2008. Just to show you what that would look like right now, 2017, $105.8 million to do all the projects that are identified in the city's master plan of drainage. It's a big number, I realize, but it's also showing, basically, everything that would need to be done at a certain point. Now, how it relates with the rest of the budget. We brought a workshop, or we brought a presentation back during some five-year CIP budget workshops about a year ago. And the point of this workshop was we were looking at water projects and we were looking at the pier at the time and seeing how we could fund those very intricate and very large projects. And so what we did is we started identifying different projects in the city's overall scope of CIPs. When I say CIP, I mean capital improvement projects. And that includes doing street projects, sewer projects, water projects, working on parks, working on your traffic signals, your pier, the beach, basically everything, fleet, building and facility maintenance. Our CIP budget kind of includes all projects. So back in 2016, we also did, we used a similar concept of high, medium and low priority. And when I say high, medium and low, as far as the budget was concerned, those were projects that either needed to be done right away within the next couple of years. We called those high. Whether they needed to be done in about three to seven years, we called those low, medium priority. Or projects that could be put off depending on funding levels and we, or at the discretion of council, they could be bumped up or bumped down and we called those low priority. Oh, there's the discussion of that. Looking at them individually, we broke out all the projects. Now, I'm not going to show you every single project. We had an 80-page PowerPoint presentation last time, but I just wanted to bring the summary tables before us today. This showed a breakdown of all the projects we identified as high priority in their funding, different funding areas. So you've got your general fund, which would fund certain projects. And there's actually a couple of storm drain projects in that funded section of the general fund. There was some work on some computer systems. We call them VFDs over at West End Pump Station. And there's a project on the budget to potentially build a sump area and a pipe system at the beach at 10th Street Parking Lot. But this takes into account all our high priority projects. This chart took, spreadsheet takes into account all the medium priority. And you see a lot of unfunded projects. Now, a lot of that are from facility and building needs. They're from fleet purchases. They could be in, basically anything that the city's general fund would fund for the city. And then lastly, this is the big one. This is our lower priority and/or unfunded project list. This is just every single capital project that the city may need either now, or coming up or in time, labeled by different funding sources. And the big number to point out on this one is the $120 million of unfunded. That includes the roughly $90 million of $2,008 for storm drains. So there's a lot of potential projects that are located in this funding group that we laid out. And to put it all together, this is a chart that basically takes all the projects. Without going through the whole thing, the bottom line number to look here is $191 million. Funded, unfunded, high priority, medium priority, low priority, whether they're sewer projects, water, storm drains, street, you name it, that's the project list for the city. It's a very, very high number. Obviously, we can't tackle it all right away, but this kind of outlines all the future needs of the city for infrastructure. And the next part of the project is where we'd like to go into some financing discussions. And I'd like to turn the discussion over to Vicky Beetley, our finance director.
David, maybe before we do that, council, is there any questions of staff based on the presentation before we move forward to financing options?
No, I think financing is most important here.
David, I will give a brief introduction, just a reminder about the slides. So when we had the presentation in January, these were just brief categories of financing options that were available to us at that time, just in large chunks. So rate increases, we could offset some of these potential projects with rate increases in water or sewer. There's no rate increase on the table right now and we are in the midst of doing a water rate and sewer rate study. Grants, and by grants, what we mean is if there's some lower-cost financing that's available through mechanisms from the federal government through the state or from local governments to other local agencies. And then, of course, bonds and loans. And before I introduce our financial advisor, I'd like to highlight three points. So you've been given a lot of information by both Steve and David tonight, and the costs, as you can see, are fairly tremendous. So what we need to do is determine which projects we can afford and which financing tool is best available for those projects, and then how do we get the money? And so with that, what I'd like to do is introduce Anna Sarabian, who's a principal from Fieldman Rollup, who is our financial advisor of record. And Anna's going to go ahead and walk us through a presentation. The first part of the presentation is going to take into consideration what we discussed at the January workshop briefly in the water and sewer projects. And then the last part of the presentation, she'll finish up with options for storm drain funding.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Anna Sarabian with Fieldman. Thanks for inviting me tonight to cover the funding options we looked at. Some of them, for the first two parts of my presentation, may sound a little bit repetitive or you may have already discussed them last year in the March workshop, but we just wanted to bring them back in as a reminder of what is out there for you. The presentation is organized into three parts. The first part is focused on the pier improvements, which were contemplated last year. And some time has passed between then and now, but the options are still valid. The only update will be as to costs and the timeline. The second part of the presentation is focused on the water fund projects. And the third part is focused on the storm, water and storm drainage projects. In terms of the pier upgrade project, when you first started looking at the pier project, the costs were estimated at a little over $3.8 million. And the timeline for completion was about 12 months from beginning to end. There were, however, some approvals that had to take place from the Coastal Commission and also renegotiation of the lease with the state of California. And that, this was considered an emergency project and was a high priority project for the city and the council. We looked at various funding options for marinas, ports and harbors and piers as well. And there were a few state programs that are offered. However, those were tailored mostly for cities and local agencies that had revenue-producing marinas or harbors, such as, for example, the city of Monterey, which is currently the beneficiary of State Department of Parks and Recreation Division of Boating and Waterways Loans. There is also, there are also a few entities, such as Huntington Beach and Long Beach, which can issue marina revenue bonds or harbor revenue bonds. And again, those financing mechanisms need a revenue source to pledge as the repayment source. And the city of Seal Beach does not have those revenues being produced. What you have is the tidlance fund, which is based on revenues produced by the pier operations. And in your situation, a potential funding option is the issuance of lease revenue bonds. Those are secured by the general fund and they are issued through a joint powers authority, which the city currently has in place. It's a joint powers authority formed by the city and the former redevelopment agency. The lease revenue bonds are secured by the general fund, but the tidlance revenues can be pledged as well and will be pledged if that's a funding mechanism the city wants to pursue. And you will need to have an asset, an encumbered asset to pledge as collateral for the lease revenue bonds. This is similar to some of the financings that the city has already done in the past. Depending on the dollar figure and the final dollar amount of the project and the useful life of the assets, you can determine which is the best course of action, negotiate a direct placement with a bank or a financial institution or issue bonds through a public sale. The key here is that the city council cannot go ahead and issue lease revenue bonds by itself. You need to use a joint powers authority. And with the dissolution act, which was adopted a few years ago, redevelopment, former redevelopment agencies, or now called successor agencies, are going away a year after the last bond issue for such successor agencies in place. In your case, you have the 2002 Series A bonds and their final maturity is September 1 of 2023. So what this means per the dissolution act, your successor agency will terminate its existence one year after September 1 of 2023. So if you were to rely on a funding mechanism that requires you issuing bonds through a JPA, you will need to form a new JPA because this one will only last you through 2024. And so there are two ways to go about this. The first way is you could demand your existing JPA to remove the successor agency and add another party. However, this would require an oversight board and a Department of Finance approval. And as you know, I'm sure from dealing with the DOF, that's a time-consuming process. The other option is to form a new joint powers entity. And it's my understanding that the city is considering that approach right now. And the best partner for that JPA would be the Seal Beach Industrial Development Authority. This method has been used by a few other cities, quite a few cities, most recently by the city of Brea as well. And so what happens is you use the, you form the Industrial Development Authority and use that as a partner to form this new JPA with the city. It's an easy process. You just require an adoption of an ordinance, which becomes effective 30 days after the second reading of the ordinance. And then a resolution is being adopted to approve this new JPA agreement and the execution of the agreement. In terms of the method of sale and the structure of any funding that you might decide to pursue, you need to keep in mind the nature of the improvements being proposed. There is a tax regulation that says that you cannot borrow on a tax-exempt basis for a term that exceeds the useful life of your assets. And so typically, depending on the improvements, most general pier improvements are about 10 to 15 years. But it depends, they can stretch to 20 and 30 years. So that's something to keep in mind. Your borrowing term needs to match the useful life of the assets. It's very important to have finished renegotiating the lease with the state so you have a certain new lease term because it will be difficult to borrow if that lease is not in place. And you also need to receive the Coastal Commission approval as well before proceeding. And in terms of the method of sale, again, you can do a public sale. And in terms of the method of sale, again, you can do a public sale in the marketplace through a negotiated method of sale, or you could do a direct placement with a financial institution. The size is pretty small, so either method could work as well. I know back at the time, when we first looked at the pier improvements, there was a discussion about the swimming pool, infrastructure need as well by the city. And this was going to up the funding need to a little over 8.7 million. So if you were to add the swimming pool to the project, you could still proceed with the lease revenue bonds. However, the assets that you will be pledging needs to have the value that equals the value you're borrowing. Are there any questions before I proceed to the next part, the presentation?
No, I'm keeping up with you, surprisingly.
All right, so the next section of the presentation has to do with options for funding your waterfront improvements. And earlier this year, there was a preliminary list of projects that totaled approximately 10.8 million. It's my understanding that since then, the project was refreshed, the project list was refreshed. And so it's now approximately down to $10 million. And all these projects, as both Steve and David talked about, they're part of a bigger subset of projects. These are the critical, the most critical projects summarized here. And the schedule that was reviewed at the time contemplated construction, bidding and starting construction within 12 months and completion within three years from construction start. And why this is important is, first of all, these projects are critical in nature. So obviously, you want them completed as quickly as possible. But second of all, for you to be able to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, you need to have reasonable expectation that you will be spending the proceeds within three years. So this 36-month construction period satisfies that requirement. We looked at several financing alternatives. The State Water Resources Control Board Loan, often called for short SRF loan, the California Department of Water Resources Loan, an I-Bank loan, and finally, water revenue bonds. In terms of the state loan programs, I'm not sure if any of you have talked to any of your counterparts in neighboring cities and water agencies, but there are two major programs that the state offers for wastewater projects and for water projects. And right now, the state has overcommitted its funding for the wastewater projects. So even agencies which were already approved are receiving calls from the state saying, "We don't have any funds right now. You'll have to wait." On the water side, there are still monies available, but it's a very long lead process. So if this is a loan option the city intends to pursue, you need to get started earlier. The projects need to fit within the eligibility criteria, and based on our preliminary review, they seem to match that criteria. And the flexibility of the state loan programs is that you don't pay, you don't start paying that service until the project's completed. One year later is when you first start. And if you are considering the I-Bank loan, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a while, there is an annual admin cost associated with that loan of 0.30% of the outstanding balance. So every year, you will be paying that on top of your admin expenses. If you were to think about water revenue bonds, those will be satisfied or secured by the rates and charges of the water system. And again, they can be issued either as public sale bonds or private placement. And the benefit from that funding mechanism is that the city will be in the driving seat, and you will control the schedule and the process. When we first started discussing these funding options, our perspective is that the city needs to approach whatever funding mechanism it would like to explore further from a long-term strategic perspective, not just from the perspective of these projects that you have in front of you right now, but also from the global project list that Steve and David shared with you, and especially focused on the five-year CIP program. The rates are still very attractive, so regardless of the method of sale or the funding options, you would benefit from attractive historically low-interest rates. And as your water projects typically have very long useful lives, you could borrow over a 30-year term, which will lower your annual payment. I already mentioned the water revenue bonds. The benefit there is that you're in the driving seat, and you dictate the schedule, and you control the schedule, and you can, you can get it done per your desire. Water revenue bonds for credits that are in the AA and higher category do not require reserve funds. So that helps you size your new issue appropriately as opposed to incurring negative arbitrage from increasing the size by adding a reserve requirement. The SRF loans now require reserves. So that's something you need to keep in mind, that you may need to set money aside to satisfy that reserve requirement. If you were to consider issuing water revenue bonds, those will have to be issued since they're a new money issue through the JPA that the city will be forming. Any questions?
Are we double A? I don't believe we have a rating.
You don't have a rating right now, but you have very strong wealth indicators and healthy reserves. So as a city, yes. For the water revenue bonds, the rating will be based on your water fund, not the general fund. So it will be based on the strength of the water rates and potential coverage that you will have. Then the third part of my presentation... I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Keep going.
Okay.
Has to do with the stormwater projects. And you all know that back in January, when we have, we had the first storm for the new year, there were flooding issues in the city. And the West End Pump Station was declared as an emergency project, along with a few other projects that David and Steve talked about. So we looked at various funding options and also looked at what other agencies do and how they fund their storm drainage issues. And from a historical perspective, there are four or five main sources of funding such type of projects. The most common one is from service fees. These are stormwater fees, which are levied either monthly or quarterly on properties within the city, both tax-paying and non-tax-paying properties. And those revenue sources are used for such projects. There are also agencies, such as yourself right now, that use their general fund for funding these projects. However, that cannibalizes those general fund revenues, which can be used for other projects within the city. There are also special assessment districts being formed for areas that benefit specifically from the stormwater and storm drainage improvements. There are system development charges, and those are typical for newly developing areas, not like your city, which is fully built out. But the system development charges are charges which are one-time upon connecting for new development to the system. And then there are grants and low-interest loans. So we started looking at, first, the lowest cost of funding out there. And there is a new requirement, which has to do with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permits, NPDES. It's a very long name. And it was introduced by the 1972 Clean Water Act. And under that act, there are actually grant funds available for eligible projects. However, those grants are only available for stormwater projects, which are not required as part of the NPDES permit. Based on our review and research, Seal Beach actually, the NPDES is applicable to Seal Beach, so this grant funding is not going to be available to you. We looked at the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan. And that is available for specific projects like this. And... Seems like I moved very quickly through my slides. Apologies for that. And that's available for projects like yours and for an agency like your city. And it can go up for 30 years in maturity. So it's a pretty long repayment term, and it's an attractive borrowing cost. And the city could apply for that loan for its stormwater projects. There is also the California Stormwater Grant Program, which is funded by Prop 1 and Prop 84. And there are certain dollar limits associated with the program, depending on whether you're applying for planning purposes, such as a new drainage master plan or implementation purposes, which is constructing the actual projects. And for implementation purposes, the dollar limits range between $250,000 and $10 million. The only bad news about this program is that there were already a few rounds. And our applications are closed right now. The next round is anticipated in 2018. So you could certainly position yourself, but you need to wait until 2018 for the ability to apply again. The other thing to keep in mind is this program requires 50% match. So you're not going to be able to fund all the projects with that source. But you are eligible for applying if you wanted to wait until 2018. We also looked at the State Community Development Block Grant as another option. And that's available for cities with population of less than 50,000 people and counties with population of less than 200,000. The city fits within this criteria, so you would be eligible to apply. The only trick here is that 70% minimum of this funding needs to go for low and moderate-income people. And so to the extent that if you can somehow fit the projects, the priority projects, to prove that they are benefiting such part of the population, you will be able to receive these grant funds. And I know you will probably wonder, just like I wondered, what is low income and what is considered moderate income? So the state looks at the median income for the area. And low income is if the income is less than 50%, 50% or less of the median. And moderate is between 50 and 70% of the area. Again, you are eligible for this loan, but you will need to satisfy the requirements. Probably the most flexible of all the state options that we analyzed and immediately available, well, immediately being not right now, but at least available as soon as you apply and your application is approved and processed, is the I-Bank loan. That provides funding to public agencies and nonprofits. And those agencies include cities, counties, special districts, assessment districts, JPAs, and other similar agencies. The loan can go as far as 30 years if the useful life of the project meets that requirement. And there is a complicated way of determining the interest rate. They divide the applications into rating categories based on strong credit, moderate credit, good credit. And they use benchmark rates, municipal market rates. Look at how long your loan will go out. For example, if it's 30 years, they will look at the 30-year rate. And depending on your size of the project, population, income factors, and unemployment levels, there are adjustments that occur to that rate. But the rates are still very attractive. And as I said, you could go out 30 years with these projects. And in your case, the pledge right now will be general fund, because there is nothing else to pay for such projects. In terms of summarizing the three main types of available funding mechanisms for the stormwater projects, there are three, three main types. The state loan programs, the state grant programs, and then other funding options. We already talked about the loan, the state loan and grant programs. They are flexible, but they require a long lead time. And you're not really sure when you will get them. For some of the loans, we discussed that you need to wait until 2018. For the grants, for some, you're not available, eligible. For others, you're eligible if you satisfy the income requirement. In terms of additional reports and costs to keep in mind, keep in mind that for the I-Bank loan, you will have the additional 0.3% of the outstanding balance due every year as an additional admin fee. And if you were to pursue the SB, SDBG grant, there are additional filing requirements. There is a filing of consolidation plan and an annual action plan that you need to do each year. Other funding options that we looked at were parcel tax, which requires two-thirds approval by your registered voters. And this was recently done, actually, at the November election by the city of Calver City. They approved successfully a parcel tax exactly for storm drain projects. And they're planning to use the funds on a pay-as-you-go basis. So they'll be collecting the parcel tax and using the money on a pay-go basis to go towards these projects. There are also assessment districts that can be formed. Those require a majority approval process, or what we call majority protest process. And if you were to form such a district, then you could issue assessment district bonds to fund those projects. Again, community support is required for those. And the third option, which is typically pay-go, is the service fees that we discussed at the beginning. Any questions?
Little overwhelming question. The assessment district that requires a majority vote. Now that, you establish districts, and you would put the vote just to that district?
Yes. So you establish the district, and you need to prove that there is special benefit by those owners in that district, and they get to vote, yes.
And then the parcel tax, though, is citywide?
It's citywide.
Okay. Any questions?
Just a quick one. Is there any state of emergency declaration financial opportunities?
We were hoping we'll find something related to the NPDES funding source, the grants, but we couldn't find anything right now.
So it doesn't matter that the governor declared that the last storm was a state of emergency?
We're not aware, we're not aware of anything right now. There is a workshop for stormwater projects coming up in April in the LA County area. The city where it's being held escapes me right now, but nothing right now that we've heard about.
The service fees that you talked about, are those for all the residents or just for the assessment districts?
For an assessment district, there will be assessments just for the residents who benefit from the improvement.
Before that, you talked about service fees.
The service fees are for the entire community, for the entire city. Those are often charged as part of the water bill or the sewer bill. And there are studies that determine the appropriate level based on different criteria, such as... based on different criteria, such as elevation and, you know, drainage and the improvements. But most typical, it's just a flat fee charged.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping in one of those, there'd be some avenue of funding, but it doesn't sound very promising. Is, are we finished? Is there anything else we need to do? Are we going to have an opportunity to reorder the priority list in light of what's happened with the storm drain issue?
Mayor, if I could, that was primarily the intent of tonight's discussion is based on the council's direction last year in terms of the capital improvement program and prioritizing in high, medium, and low, given what we know now about the storm drain system. If there was a desire of the council to perhaps look at moving up some of those storm drain projects from low into medium or high. And if that's the case, some of the financing options that are out there and available. And I know it's a discussion that we don't have time for tonight, that we need to continue forward. But if that's a desire of the council, we can re-agendize it for another study session discussion.
Is there agreement with the council that we take another look at?
Absolutely.
The CIP and the prioritization that we did last time versus the changing situation? Is that all right? So, go ahead.
I think it's a good idea. I did have a couple of questions about David Spitz's slides. If we can just take the time to look at that real fast.
Yeah, sure.
Can you bring those back up again? I know, you know, in 1999 and 2008, you had a plan. I mean, is that still in progress? I mean, I saw that you did a lot of work, $10 million plus from 2008 to '09. Are we progressing along on that plan or is that just dead in the water? Or how does that, how's that?
Can you guys hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Yeah, they're, going all the way back to the 2004, here, I'll just... If we go all the way back to the 2004 Ad Hoc Committee and then with the inclusion of the 2008 Master Plan of Drainage, we, these were all the projects we've done since then.
Right.
A lot of these were the highest, I keep using the word priority, but were the highest labeled projects that came out of the Ad Hoc Committee and then the Master Plan of Drainage. Now, some of these, when we put together the Master Plan of Drainage, what you may see is it's not listed on this map, Here's Candleberry. Because when we created this master plan, this project was already in the works and being completed. Or might have already been just about done at that point, or was already budgeted. So we didn't include that in the master plan. We were just including projects moving forward.
So you're still moving forward on the plan and it's not...
Yes, yes.
Hasn't stopped or subsided?
Whenever the direction of the council is to budget funding for staff to, you know, continue forward with storm drainage projects, yes, we definitely will.
Pick another one off the list, so to speak.
Pretty much. We would go with the high-priority locations or if there were specific recommendations or decisions to go with another area, for instance, that's where we would go.
Okay, I guess we'll revisit that. Slide number four showed the pump stations. And was there any discussion about the four bays being increased, the capacity? Or is that, would that help at all? I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, it would help. There are projects listed in this Master Plan of Drainage for the West End Pump Station to be...
Capacity.
Yeah, to be, to be additions put in. And part of that would be to redo the four bay, add capacity, add extra piping to the pump station itself. And additional discharge pipes.
And that would help, I think.
Completely, yes.
And as far as the streets being part of the conveyance system, can you just elaborate just briefly on that? Because when I got out of that, that the streets act as the storm drain when there's no storm drain. Is that what we're looking at? I mean, I think you have a slide of that too, right?
We'll bring that slide up. Yeah, that was the, that, that right there, it's really, it's really critical to understand. These elements all form the system and they all work together. So the streets convey the water down to the pipes. And the pipes are designed, the catch basins are designed, it's intervals, to take the street, the water off the street before it exceeds our goal. And then we have to get that water down to the pump station because we don't have gravity on our side in Seal Beach. We have to pump it over the levee and that's why those pump stations are so critical. Some communities have gravity on their side. So it's critical, and then the pump stations are critical, but the pipe conveyance system is equally critical. We have to be able to get the water to those pumps. And those pumps are all sized correctly because they have, we've looked at our analysis and we've looked at our protection goals. The pumps are sized for those protection goals. But we have to get the conveyance, the infrastructure is all sized, integrated. And the answer is, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. And do we ever seek assistance from like Orange County Flood Control District or the Department of Transportation for Pacific Coast Highway flooding-type issues? Is that something we can maybe look at in the near future? I'd like to kind of visit that because I noticed on Pacific Coast Highway and Marina Drive, it, you know, tends to flood a lot, as well as the Flood Control District too.
Absolutely. We have a, one of the projects that we have constructed, it was one of our box projects, culvert, box culverts. And what you'll see, I use box culverts, pipelines. They are one and the same, but box culverts, we rely on box culverts because our pipes have to be so large because they're so flat and they have to stay shallow. And we can carry more, convey more water through a box culvert than a pipeline. The downsides are very expensive to build, as you'll see on the prices. But we do have a pipe that, we have a box culvert that was built as part of our project. And maybe you, we already built the first phase. So now we can take that, that's one of our high-priority projects, is to build on that. And that will take us toward Coast Highway.
Okay.
It's already stubbed out and ready to go. So that would be one of our recommendations to council, is to let's move forward on the second phase and we can bring it toward Coast Highway and talk to Coast Highway, talk to Caltrans as well.
I think that's a good idea. Slide 11 real fast. There's like a little island on the bottom right, Seaway. Is, is the discussion to add improvements there? I can't really make out the red dot there, but I know that the flap doesn't work correctly. It's kind of a low-hanging fruit, so to speak. And it seems like something we can maybe look at.
Definitely. And when we bring all this back, we can identify a lot of those projects. There are a couple, definitely, that may or may not be listed high or medium priority, but could use improvements and could be a lot less expensive than some other projects. So you're right, there are, as you said, the low-hanging fruit. There's some projects that we could do for less cost and improve certain situations.
Because I wouldn't want to forget about that small area especially. And then on College Park East, I know you said we did some projects. It's my understanding that we bought a house recently. Can you just, in a nutshell, just kind of, I think is one of the stars that you showed, just for the public's information?
Yeah, sure. When you're talking about the stars, we're referring to this location right here. Going a little more in-depth as it relates to the future improvements. In order to convey the water out of College Park East to the golf course, you have to go into an underground pipe system under Lamson. Currently, there's four locations for it, off Basswood, Candleberry, I believe that's Elder, and Guava, right around Guava. There's two existing underground storm drain pipes that basically traverse between homes or between properties. And for future needs, they're undersized. So it becomes a very, very, very difficult, if not impossible, task to increase the size of pipes between two existing houses. So what the city did is they purchased a property pretty much right around here between them to where what you can do is, again, if we budget that project, is pipe a lot of what would go to these two sump locations towards the middle and then out in a, in one much larger system. And we can bring all the necessary conveyance from these two tributary areas to one point in between.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you very much, staff. You did a great job. And we'll be seeing this item on the agenda maybe in the next month or two. And we will adjourn this portion of the meeting and reconvene. How about about 10 after 7:00 or so, we'll convene the city council meeting.